Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You got a motion to approve that Jim presented? All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment, bring public comments. Move on to the consent agenda. Like Sandy's been busy.
Lots of minutes.
Lots of minutes.
Yeah.
To approve the consent agenda. Second.
All.
Aye. Discussing request for direction regarding the Board of Adjustments referring to City Council Ordinance 165.134, decision pertaining to paving off-street parking.
Chris, you want to set this up?
Sure. So, Mr. Riley met with the Board of Adjustment. He was requesting that, so our current ordinance says that off-street parking in all areas of town must be either concrete, asphalt, or some other dust control as approved by the City Council. And so, when I was presented with building permit to do a gravel driveway, I interpreted that to mean that it needed to be either gravel, I mean, excuse me, either paving or asphalt. And so, Mr. Riley appealed to the Board of Adjustments, the Board of Adjustments to look at it and said, "We look at it and think that there's an opportunity here for gravel, with the city's blessing of an approved dust control." So, that was, they didn't really make a decision, they just said, they looked at it and said, "The code permits gravel as long as the City Council approves a dust control method." So, it's back in your court.
Okay, I've looked at what I believe he's asking for, I don't know if anybody else has had a chance to take a look at it, but he's talking 15 feet in length, is that a good estimate?
Yeah.
Oh, I can see this, yeah, sorry Bob. It's a pretty small area, it's just from the apron, in about 15 feet, he's just trying to be able to pull in instead of going over the curb, so, that's what I saw. To me, that's not going to be an issue for dust, that's just my opinion.
I don't think you'd kick out much dust in 15 feet.
Nope.
He's gonna have to come to this big screeching hall, and I don't think he's gonna do that.
All right.
I got teenage kids, that might happen.
Do you have some method or idea what you might do for dust control if you need it?
We were gonna put like a three-quarter inch rock with the, like the limey fine kind of stuff in it, so it kind of packs in a little better, and then we'll keep it moist or keep it, so it doesn't have any dust come out of it. We already have parked gravel already, we don't have any troubles with dust at this point in time.
I don't see dust being an issue unless it's a high volume.
Right.
High speed.
I don't see a problem.
Motion to...
Allow it?
Allow it?
Then make motions to allow.
Just for the records, allow gravel.
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Discussion and request for direction to purchase 113 South Madison Street for the amount of $5,000 and to pursue grant funding for renovation of property. Chris?
So, for the council, we made an offer to Dr. and Mrs. Williams regarding the property of $5,000. They've accepted that offer, it is contingent upon bringing the title up to date.
Yeah, so, they'll have to order an abstract, bring it up to date, or go to the title committee to make sure there isn't, you know, for example, not, like a traffic ticket or something, make sure there's not a traffic ticket, as an example, that then we would want them to pay off, so we can make sure the city has clear title.
So, we'd like your approval to move forward with that, I mean, you've given the direction, but just the final approval to make sure that we're still in sync. And then, the other part of this is that there is a challenge grant available to building owners that would help with rehabilitation, it's up to $75,000. There's an opportunity to work with that building into the building to the north, with us as an owner and the other owner. It's this matching grant, so if you $75,000, if we were awarded a grant, plus we'd have to match, we, meaning the building owners, plural, would have to match that whatever we're awarded. We'd like to move forward with working with Main Street to apply for that grant. There is a condition, it cannot be used for public use buildings, so, if we're awarded that grant, we would be assuming that this would not be a building that we would use for government purposes, it would be going back into private use and be on the tax source.
So, does, if we purchase it, is that person in term liability? Say we sign the papers, and the next day the thing falls in?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it would, should be make sure it's covered under the insurance.
Right.
Which, I wouldn't know why it wouldn't, with the insurance, I mean, I would go ahead and call the insurance agency to make sure that they're, make sure that they know that there's other properties on the property list, but, yeah.
I guess the way to say that Scott is, is that this would be a reasonable assumption of liability here because of insurance. We have already placarded it, in fact, rendered it as a, on a capo site, and it's, it, it's vacant, so, realistically, we have done everything that probably required of us to assure that the liability is very minimal, as well as lock it or something. But there's charge, there's charge immunity to some of your...
On the grant part, do you have any, is there any idea or any numbers as to what it would take to fix the building?
No, so we have two estimates, two different engineers that have agreed to come in and put together numbers and plans. We haven't, we need some direction, right, because they're both gonna, it's a charge for either one of them to come in and do that, so, we weren't prepared, one of them is a couple thousand dollars, the other one's about 6,000. The one that's 6,000, I think the plans that we would get would be more detailed, you know, it's not just, "This is what you need to do, but here's the scope of work and here's our bid to do that."
Is the grant strictly tied to rehabbing the building as opposed to replacing?
I don't know for certain, but I suspect so. I, I can, there's some we can verify, but typically, these grants are not tear down and rebuild, they are rehabilitation of buildings.
That doesn't mean that we couldn't leave the front of the site.
Well, like we talked before, even if we did put up a new shell, we'd have a period correct, or whatever. But if we apply for this and receive it, we have to use it for that.
But we wouldn't have to accept it, we can just apply for it and see the conditions.
Because, you know, are we, if it's 500,000 to fix it, is that what we want to do, you know, as opposed to 75,000 to do that?
Yeah, so, we can do the preparation of the grant and bring it to you, and you'll see the conditions prior to approving the application.
Yeah.
But I would say, each community can only submit one grant application, so, recognize that if we move forward and, and make this application, or move forward with the application, nobody else from one bill will.
Does it have to be, do you have to give them the specific address of what you're moving on, or can it be based on any building on this particular project?
I think we have to move forward with lying the building and vetting out all the information about the grant.
So, we'll have to move quickly on the grant, the application is due mid to late September, so it's not something we can, if we move forward with the building, then we'll just move forward with the grant application as well, and bring it to you for your approval probably at the first meeting, first meeting in September, and it's quick.
So, since there's that, then somebody else could do it, right?
Yeah. Second.
Just for the record, so people understand this, Chris may mention the fact that the $5,000 was per direction, now it's per direction given in closed session. This is the action coming out of closed session.
Darren?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Discussion regarding styles of installation of automated metering system.
Which one? You or Chris?
I don't know, I didn't put it on. But it's...
I didn't, but we can send out the update.
So, I put, sent out the update, you guys saw it through email that had the agenda, basically, 18 September, so we're both gonna start installation of the automated meter. So, we met with the installation team out of Texas last week, saying everything good to go, all the background information we've done, metering for, all that stuff's allowed us to help with pyramid, get stuff going, have enough meters in stock to go and get going, so we'll start first with, well, electric and then water, all that stuff inside. We're starting our campaign now about getting out postcards and information about the upcoming stuffs.
Hold on.
Hopefully, we've done the first year, so September through, you know, January, March, just pin it on tablos and fully in.
Authorized sale of a surplus bucket truck.
So, that would put on there, bucket truck did sell on auction, sold $14,100, was the final bid, they had about eight, eight people bidding on that throughout the last month, and it was sold to a person down in Menin, Louisiana, so if you approve the sale for $14,100, I'll go to find them tomorrow, and they'll have five days to pay, and then they'll pick up within 10 days thereafter.
Would you like to have somebody that ever replied?
He might, he might call for information for haulers, if he does that, then may ask for locals.
14,200 deal for less. And all the gumbo we can need. You gotta remember, you have to bring all your fishing equipment back. I have a motion to approve the sale of truck.
Some move.
Second.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Discussion and request for input regarding the procedures for the August 23rd, 18 goal setting session.
Just wanted to go over a couple things with you all regarding this. First of all, we're gonna do that setting, but I'm also, we're gonna get started also on the CIP. But let's talk about the goal setting first, and then we'll talk about the three sheets next. What we're gonna do is ask for people, the council and whoever else, to put things that they would like to see done in the next three to five years, as, as a method of trying to determine what we can do and what we need to do. We can break it down even more to one to two years and three to five years, if you want to look at it on a short-term and medium-term basis. But we will go around the room and keep asking folks, one at a time, to, to tell us what they would like to have on, on, as a consideration for a goal. We will go around and around, one at a time, until people just run out. Typically, that means that you'll probably go around five, six times. We're gonna ask that you be rather specific, not just say, "We want to do something with housing," be more specific than just say, "Housing," what does housing mean? There might be two or three aspects of housing maybe you might want to consider. We'll draw those up on a list, and post them on paper all over the place, and then, these stickers, you will be asked individually to vote, and we will color code them in such a manner that we'll have first priority and second priority. And depending on how many we put up there, we'll probably ask you to put anywhere from three to five stickers for primary and secondary priorities. The one question that I have for the council about this is, other than the elected officials, do you or do you not want department directors to participate in this process?
You talking about individual department directors, like the water and the zilch or?
No, I'm just talking about Danny, Chris, myself, the chiefs, and Taylor.
Good idea. Coming up with ideas and goals or rating the ideas?
Stuff on the paper and, and, and or vote. I kinda like that idea.
Yeah, they might have fresh ideas.
Yeah. Things of stuff I don't know.
Doug?
Sandy too. And Sandy too.
Well, no.
That'll send, no. She's one taking minutes. I mean, the whole idea here is, is that, that a couple of us will just be writing this stuff down in paper. There'll be sticky sheets, we can stick them up against, there'll be like a huge posted note, and we'll have some stuff.
I like our energy efficient.
In a way, yeah. One of the things that, that we'll do here too is, is that if we see some duplicates or we start to see something that kind of has the same, we'll try and collapse them a little bit together, if, if they really seem rather similar. The whole idea is, is to get stuff out on the paper, just to find out, just, just to get everybody out there to say, "Okay, we need to do this and this and this." And I, and I think that one of the things that we'll do on an interim basis is, is that if we get all this out there, then we might go around the room and determine whether this is a one to two-year goal or a three to five-year goal. But I think that the point being is, is that to draw at least some understanding of consensus, all we're doing is to try and get everybody's ideas out there, and then, everybody gets footstickers up and votes. Then you will determine, in many respects, what your desire is. Now, that is really just the first step. The second step is, how do we do it and how do we finance that? And that will be a directive to staff to determine how you could go about implementing these goals and what financial impact that would be, so that, in fact, if we put something out there that is really desired, but we don't know about the financial capability, then we come back to you all in another setting anyway, to review the results and, and talk about the implementation circumstances, and say, "Okay, where are we at here?" And it's from that second meeting that I think that we would actually have a determination of what we would have for, for a set of goals. There would be three things that I suggest that we don't put on there. First of all, streets. I think everybody wants streets. The question is, how much for streets? And I'll get into that just a little bit more here in a minute. Secondly, we don't want to put down the culvert on East Street, that's being done. Third, we don't want to put down the AMI, the automated meter, we're doing that too. And actually, there's one more too, and that is, we don't need to put out anything as far as sewage treatment improvements, we've made commitments to that, that is going to happen, and, and we have to be cognizant of that from a financial standpoint, the fact that matters, commitments have already been made, we are doing that. So, you take those out the table, and with the understanding that ultimately, streets is gonna be a situation as to not whether to do streets, but how much. So, with that being said, the sheet that I sent, I gave out to you just now, is something that I'm, I'm gonna ask you to fill out and bring back next week. And this is prioritizing what we've identified in construction resurfacing priorities, or streets that we think are the ones that should be considered, on either one, the highest priority, two, a medium priority, or three, a lesser priority. I put early bird on here late because you all are talking about it, but that's a seal coating process, I don't know if you want to bring that in, I put a question mark in it, because seal coating is not what we're really talking about with any of these other streets, we're talking about reconstructions here more than likely. And then, some of these streets may very well, not just because of their conditions, but we would then likewise look at their underground and find out if there's more costs involved with that. But from this list of streets, and with your prioritizations of one, two, and three, we would, in, in any similar realm, have an understanding about where is your, your primary concern. Understand here that these are not full streets, these are segments of streets. There's somewhat arbitrary decisions here, for instance, a lot of people say that we need to do Madison Street. Well, there are some portions of Madison Street that are not as bad as others. And I'm not saying that this is a be-all, end-all inventory, if you want to add to this inventory, I would suggest that you do that. This is the best guess that we have right now from the standpoint of, where the view is, is that this is the most critical of concerns as far as conditions concerned, and it is not a small list, as you well know, and we are not going to be able to afford to do all of this.
Just half, right?
Well, I think, I, I think that the circumstance here is, is that we, we would look at this in segments, and, and we would say, "This segment's gonna cost us a couple, three, four, maybe half a million." The real question here is, is not so much what streets we're gonna do, but let's just say that we do a bond issue that, I mean, we're not gonna get completed in doing this, we, we probably won't get this thing off the ground in this upcoming fiscal year, maybe the following fiscal year, but we would prepare for the financing of that, and doing a bond issue for that. And the issue in this context would be, are you gonna do one and a half million dollars of streets, two million dollars worth of streets, two and a half million dollars of streets, those are the kinds of range of bonding that I think that you'd consider. We have one bond that's outstanding right now, that's been done for streets, it's been known, generally speaking, as the one known use for Franklin Street. But actually, we did more things in Franklin Street with that bond, for instance, Anderson in front of the law enforcement center. There were other projects that were somewhat adjunct, something that was separate. When we actually write this bond issue, we're gonna say, "For infrastructure improvements, that gives us some flexibility to plug into now." But the idea here is, is that we would do it off of this list, from which we would understand this is the prioritization. I think all these streets need to be done, there's no question about it. So, the, so the, the thing here is, is what is most critical? What is most critical from the standpoint of, of condition, travel, traffic? Actually, one thing that we don't think much about is, is that I think some of these streets are considerably impacted by bus routes. And that has an impact upon these streets, is that something that we need to take in consideration because of the bus routes? Maybe that's something that we go up to the school and say, "How about a little?" Now, they're not gonna say, "No," or they're not gonna say, "Yes," but I mean, the point being is, is that at least, we would say, "Hey, look, we're looking at this in consideration." And I'm not expecting the school to say yes, because, you know, they, they got line issues just like any government, but the point being is, is that we need to be cognizant of that issue in and of itself. Maybe it's a way that we entertain, entertain a discussion with them about changing bus routes, or focusing bus routes instead of saying, "Now, we're going over here and we're not gonna go over there." I want you to understand one thing, as far as East Street and the culvert is concerned, Danny and I have talked about what the basis of that project is gonna be, and we're talking that not only would the culvert be done, but the flat zone right past it on the, what would be the south side of the culvert, we would pave it. That's maybe 100, 150 feet. But the reality is, is that you got a whole bitch on East Street that is on here, that's gonna be probably a bigger cost from the standpoint of the segment. On the other hand, it depends on what you want to pave it in. The problem with East Street is, is that while it is probably not heavily traveled by cars, the heavy traffic is what beats up that street, it will beat up that street, and, and, I, I did a school bus.
It takes a lot of school bus traffic?
It does.
Are you driving traffic? I don't know why.
It does.
I don't know why they take the beating to go down through there, rather than going to the highway.
Well, it's, well, and that's perhaps some of the discussion that needs to be entertained here.
And it took a major beating during the Franklin Street project.
So, but, but, and, and another concern, I, I did a, I did a master's, if you will, a thesis, or you can call it the start paper, but I did a thesis on street condition related to bus traffic. One bus traveling over a street is equivalent to 1,600 cars. It's because of axle pressure, it's likened to the idea that if you are wearing a tushy, you step on somebody's toe, it's not gonna be as painful as one wearing a four-inch spiked high heel. That's the analogy. So, even in this con, in this construct, if we start to say, "Well, East Street is a good deal as far as cost is concerned," it will give us an opportunity to talk with the schools and say, you know, and it's not just East Street. Maybe there's something we can do about routing some of these bus, buses in an area that say we made a commitment to, but keep them on those streets, not on some of the others, but, you know. The other side of the coin though is, is that if we were to do that, you're gonna wind up building a stronger street again, but if you're gonna accommodate that traffic, that means thicker bases, more, more construction at the sub-base level, and of course, and, so, those things need to be taken into consideration if you're gonna build a good street and you're gonna accommodate a lot of bus traffic.
One thing I would caution about, you was talking about paving on East Street after the culvert, depending on what time of the year you do it. If you're talking about a winter project, I wouldn't turn around and pave it.
I don't think that we would either. I, I, I wouldn't recommend any of it for exactly the reasons that you know about.
I bet a county uses different routes for dump trucks for hauling gravel and stuff to keep their roads from getting...
It may also be a situation where we could institute truck routes, say, on East Street, and tell the school folks, "Don't travel there in March, April, May." You know, when the culvert is out, they're gonna bypass and go down to the highway anyway, it's gonna add a nominal amount of...
I think the biggest reason the buses take it is because Nuthatch, east of town.
Right.
Back check.
Right. But you know, then we talk about another government, you know? I mean, I think that those are the kinds of things that you have to be cognizant of here is, is, just because we have priorities in streets, it doesn't mean that each street is gonna cost the same. So, I, I ask you to, to think of all of those things in at least some context, but right now, we don't have any cost attached here, and, and the whole idea here is not look at the cost, but rather look at what you consider as the most important. So, you have those homework assignments, I would suggest that for the round where we are going to put stuff on the wall, write them down and bring them here as opposed to just kind of guess, bring five, six, seven of them. You're gonna see some people repeat, so you won't have to do it, but I think the whole idea here is, is that, I think the exercise itself, as far as this goal setting, shouldn't take more than two hours, and that includes having a little dinner. And we're gonna start this at 6 o'clock, right? So, if you have the fire station at 6 o'clock next week, I've done this many times, and to be honest with you, I've never seen this not work from the standpoint of helping us establish direction for where you want to be. It's a simple process, it's one that's routinely used in many, many organizations, both public and private. So, the one question is, I'm assuming we're good, is that we'll have staff also participate?
It's mainly comments, I mean, all these streets are bad, you made the comment that they shouldn't be on our goals, I think we should have at least some sort of goal, whether it's within three years, five years, how rare... how we are going to tackle.
No, Scott, what I said, Scott, what I said was, is that this is a goal. It's not a question about whether we're going to do this or not. It's a matter of how much.
Okay, you made a comment, you mentioned that streets have some goals. I think from the public's comments, we'll leave this out.
Yeah, it's a given.
Like for the street CIP, you should be number one for a lot.
Well, and understand that.
It eliminates a lot of discussion.
I understand that the CIP is going to be a separate thing. I mean, one of the goals that we would have is execute a CIP. This is what you're executing. I'm, generally speaking, the goals of doing, yeah, we know that.
We need to come up with a number that we can allocate to it on a yearly basis.
And, and, and this is, this is, this is going to be a struggle because every city in this country goes through the struggle of doing this. You've heard for decades that we are underfunding infrastructure improvement in this country. There hasn't been a highway bill that brings billions of dollars out to the states and then down to the cities or county level in 10 years. It used to be something that was done by anybody. I don't know what's going to happen, but if, if we are left to our own devices, we have to do the best we can. But because we have tax limitations where we didn't 10, 20 years ago, we have limitations as to what we can do. So be mindful that while we can say that we could put together a bond issue of a million five, two million, two million five, we have limitations legally as to how much we can put out of the bond. And if you want to do this, it needs to be a housing bond or something related to financing housing. Then we have to take that in consideration in the CIP. But this will get the CIP going. It will be recognized as a concurrent, but also related situation for the whole system. Any questions? Are we good? Six o'clock next Thursday.
If you want hot stuff on your fridge, you have to bring your own hot sauce.
So remember that, too. Yeah. Okay, that's all I got there.
Discussion regarding the status of the organization, funding, and staffing of the Parks and Recreation Services.
I put this on because I met with both the Mutual Center Board and Park and Rec Board just to put the issues out on the table. What should we be looking at as far as how we go about providing Park and Recreation Services? How do we deal with the Mutual Center? This is really more of a report in the context of saying, one, with the Mutual Center Board, we know that they got thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars left in the CDs, which is their capital development fund. And it started out at, what, a million or more? It's down to thirty-five thousand dollars. And if you watch the agenda of a Mutual Center Board meeting, all you do is watch them approve routine operational expenditures, and that's it. The question is, and this isn't so much a question for the Mutual Center Board as it is with the county and the city, are we going to continue to do the same thing after and effectively the money has run out? As far as what we want to do, what we want to see, how we want to operate the Mutual Center? I think, and Taylor chimed in, I think part of this is really based upon what kind of service delivery and what kind of expectations the community can have about the Mutual Center. And at this point in time, we also know that the Mutual Center is, has tailored as part of the cost of operation that's coming from, from that, through that auspice, which is a shared responsibility from the county. What I mentioned to them, though, was, is that the Mutual Center from time to time has some Robbie's time in there and maybe other, rare occasions, other city staffers in there. That stuff is absorbed directly by the city and is not picked up on a shared basis. And one of the things that I said to the board is, is that maybe what we need to do over this fiscal year is truly chart the times that we spend in here that's not related. It's Taylor's work, but rather other stuff that the city does. And in that regard, say, "Okay, what are we really going to do?" I'm going to come back to that for a second, but I want to talk about what we talked about with the Park and Rec Board. In a similar sense, I asked the Park and Rec Board, "What do you see as your function, as your mission?" And Scott was there for that discussion. And I said, I asked, "Is this board looking at the oversight of operations? Or is it more focused on program developments and any capital improvement developments or redevelopment of parks and park systems?" There wasn't any real decision made on that. Scott, you tell me, does it seem like they're more leaning toward just focusing on programming and capital development?
Yeah, and I think that's just because of money sometimes. We got ideas.
Sure. Well, and I think that that's, I think that that's a fair concern. On the other hand, that doesn't mean that Park and Rec Board can't evolve themselves into a fundraising circumstance. Doesn't mean that if there's no money, it has to come from the city. The building that we're in right now, it was really due to private financing and fundraising. Maybe that is something that the, that the Park and Rec Board would consider if they wanted to put together a, a, a fund, or want to pursue some sort of capital project. But the circumstance here again is, who's paying for what? We also had Jill there from the swimming pool talking about the swimming pool. And one of the things that she's determined and the board concurred with is that we're going to close the pool down effectively the Sunday of Labor Day weekend. And that in the future, the board may very well consider closing it down even earlier than that, like other pools, public pools in our region, because they see somewhat of a parallel to the school calendar, and so we can essentially operate. But there are costs involved here that aren't just pools' costs, or for that matter, just Park and Rec's costs. For instance, Danny, we had, "How many people committed? How many staff hours committed to the pool renovation project this spring before it opened?"
Oh, a week.
Probably a week of how many? Twelve people. None of that was paid for by Park and Rec budgets. None of that was paid for by the pool budget. All of that was on the common. And in fact, not only was it just allocations of personnel from the general fund, we had a lot of contribution from the utility budgets. Now, I'm not saying that's a one thing to do, if that, in fact, is what you all want to do. But the fact, but the fact of the matter is, is that if we are doing that, be cognizant that that's what's happening here. And that when we talk about the operations of the pool, while we know that this year, the revenue is going to come in, we should say about forty-four thousand?
Yeah, around forty-three.
Forty-three, forty-four thousand. That's pretty standard. I mean, their high was forty-five, their low was thirty-eight or thirty-nine in a bad summer in the last few years. So we know how much revenue is coming in, but we also know that the expenditures, when you start looking at maintenance work, maintenance, all the strip severing, even though it shows in the pool budget as breakeven. We're really, you know, when I came here last year, they said, "Oh, we got a swimming pool that breaks even." And I'm going, "That's incredible, because usually pools lose money." Well, ours probably is, but to what degree we're losing money? It may very well be that we need to be cognizant of the fact that utilities, effectively in-kind, is making this contribution that normally we would, we would be getting, if you will, from utilities as an offset of some of the other general fund expenditures. But it's probably important for us to understand that the pool doesn't really break even. There is a lot of in-kind contribution that goes on here. I don't know whether it's five thousand, I don't know whether it's ten thousand, I don't know if it's fifteen thousand, it's somewhere in that range. And that may be okay. Yeah, I mean, really, that may be okay. But let's, let's be honest about it. We also have a pool that is heated, and it is heated a lot. And the question there is, why are we doing that? Well, we're doing it for effectively private lessons and private aquatic programs. Should there not be a surcharge on those fees that normally don't come our way? They're kind of actually done through the private auspices. But if you're going to use our pool and you're going to require us to heat it, how about a little bit for the effort here, because it costs a lot of money to heat up the pool? I'm not saying that it would be something that is extraordinarily expensive. It might be a five percent, ten percent surcharge on a fifty-dollar fee. I don't think that that would put them out of business, and in fact, Jill, but that would be reasonable within what she's being charged for. But the fact is, we're trying to be a little bit more cognizant about who's paying for what here. That heating cost is actually a pretty good number. And, you know, we're going to see a rate increase in electric utilities here pretty quick, so cognizant of that, too. Finally, as far as staffing is concerned, it is recognized that there are times when Robbie's work is, is done in concert of providing assistance to other aspects of our government, particularly in the street department. And that that is not really parks. Simultaneously, there's times when other people from, for instance, the street department, go and help Robbie out doing park stuff. The management of that is, is something that becomes a little bit problematic at times when you try to coordinate that. And the question ultimately comes down to is, and there's not an answer yet for that. There's not a recommendation for that. But is that, is the maintenance function something that you would put in? Could you put it under streets, grounds, and facilities, which is generally what we do, except for parks, and start incorporating that in the parks function with the street department? Or do you keep it segregated and recognize that city probably provides services, and parks then provide services back? We don't know how much that back and forth is. It probably changes, and it will change as we, we go forward. But it's something that we need to be cognizant of as far as monitoring that and finding out whether that we're underfunding parks or overfunding parks as far as maintenance is concerned. And that ultimately doesn't make any difference, because it's still general fund, one way or the other, whether it's streets or parks. And I think that that's a situation that as we go through this fiscal year and start to construct a budget for next year, we need to know whether in fact you want to continue this way, if in fact it makes sense, or do you want to change it, because it might make sense to do it the other way and recognize that you sometimes have two or three staff members and sometimes you have none. But those are, those are things that I've put out on the table for the Park and Rec, for the Mutual Center. It is a starting point for which the discussion needs to go. I think, most specifically, as far as the Mutual Center is concerned, I, I think it's appropriate that we engage the county in the formal sense to have this discussion a little bit more, because all I'm asking for is, is that we're just trying to look over the crest of the hill. Because we know that for all intents and purposes, what's going to happen when all of a sudden the next major fix needs to be done in the Mutual Center, and there is no money? Who's that going to fall to? We've had the Mutual Center agreement with the county for 21 years now, a whole generation. It may very well be time just to revisit it, certainly in the circumstances it suggests. Comments?
Might even throw a little bit of the pool in with the Mutual Center.
Well, you know what? Let me make one final overarching comment about this. How many people that are we providing service to, not for the Mutual Center, because it is counted, covered by the county, but for the swimming pool or our parks, are being used by people that are within our city limits?
Well, the pool and the use for the center, both are a draw for people coming in, whether it's city or county, either one.
Right. And the question then is, is, like schools, should Park and Rec function be a county-wide service? I'm not saying I have an answer to that, but I'm putting the question out there. It might be a little more, more bite than you want it to. I think it's a question, and that could be for our taxpayers, too. I don't have numbers to suggest how much it's used by people now within the city limits. But we have a county-wide Sheriff's Department, overlap some police departments. We have a county-wide school system, recognizing that there is a whole new school system. We have a county-wide conservation function. Is this another one of those to consider? Assuming that you'd even have the county supportive of it. I mean, the question here is, are we under, are we paying for the same service more so than people who live just outside the city coming in and using it? I think that quite frankly, we subsidize county residents anyway, because it's easier for them not to pay our property taxes by living just outside the city limits, even though they enjoy all the benefits of the city anyway. This isn't a problem unique to Blount Field and Davis County. Those are just thoughts.
Fire Department is kind of a county-wide thing, do they all deal with it?
I'll tell you what, the fire department, very significant particular relationships because of the mutual aid agreements. We're halfway down the road with a county-wide fire department because of mutual aid agreements. Who's on writing the fire service costs in this county?
I mean, it's a good example of what you're getting at. Anything else on that right now?
No, sir.
Consider approval of allowing city administrator to carry over two days of vacation past his employment anniversary date.
I promised to use him about 10 days after my anniversary date, because I'm moving to a house.
That you're buying?
Yes. My mortgage has been approved. I'm going to be a real taxpayer. So moved.
I got a little quagga. Do we carry over any other employees' vacations time?
On a very discretionary basis, I carried a little bit of Chris's over that he used shortly thereafter. It is, it is done with special circumstance recognition. It just so happens that my anniversary date came up quicker than I thought I'd be moving into a house. Otherwise, I'm really going to be absent between now and the end of the month.
Darren?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Scott?
Yeah.
Jack?
Yes.
John?
Consider and discuss steel coating early bird drive.
Scott, you could.
Yeah, well, this is, this was brought to my attention that, I guess when, and I might have some of the facts on it. That we annexed in that area, and we had done that many, many years ago. We had promised to do that, we would steel coat it, and that has never been done. They would just ask and get this, and I think this may be possibly discussed a couple of times long ago. A couple of years ago, maybe. Still never had that.
Before my time, but my time's mature.
Yeah, well, same here.
How about it got done a year ago?
We did it, was it half? I mean, we did.
Chris, wasn't half early bird done about a year ago?
We went from West Street to the Fort. And so then you've got.
And so then you've got the, uh, the two branches. I can pull it up here if you'd like. And then they embarrassed her to have this portion done. So it's done to here. I think this is the portion. Early bird stops, I don't know if they're.
Early early bird goes way back, third to last thousand. We have, since this came on the agenda, we worked up a real rough estimate of about 30,000. We openly did less than that, but 30,000 to it.
Do we already have a seal code? But it's planned for this year.
It's a maintenance item, but it's a big maintenance item. I mean, this is not something that I would say is, is, is something that would fall in the maintenance. This is really, if you think about it, new construction. We, we have ordinances that say that, um, streets are to be paved, residential streets are to be paved in gravel. That is what's allowed. That's why it was there to begin with. There's no compunction to, compunction to have anybody built other than gravel. That's the standard. The standard that's out there is it's what's allowed by ordinance.
The problem I've got with seal coating anywhere is, you know, either how well it holds up over time with heavy weight, especially on the edges or when they're plowing snow, it's easy to damage and that's, it just feels like throwing it away. You know that if it's maintained well and not overly trafficked and stuff, it's, it's a whole lot better, but I just hate seeing something like this done and then they get the truck goes in and it's about, but it's ruined.
But a load restriction, why would I want to ruin it?
Well, I, I mean, in deference, John, I mean, think about what's, what's the asked to be paid.
Yeah.
You're not going to have any traffic now. I, I mean, if there were a street that could handle seal coating, the vehicles that will be heavy vehicles on there is your occasional snowplow, your garbage trucks every once in a week. Now, is that enough to bust it up? We have other streets in similar circumstances. Are they the ones that are on this list? No, because, because those are heavily traveled streets and they're generally concrete. But again, we're at a kind of a crossroads here because, no pun intended, we have a standard that is according to ordinance, gravel is okay. And it would make a lot of sense that gravel is okay in this very low density developed area. In fact, there's only, I think, two or three houses in the areas that we're talking.
Chris, where's that?
So we're talking, what we've done is from here to here. And then the, I think the discussion is about two pieces around to here. And then the part that comes out like this. And just to give you some example of costs, these aren't current, but I did hear that from here to here is about $10,000.
There's one house.
One house.
Yeah.
So saying that, would, I mean, would it be, would it be feasible to do not that far and do the rest of it?
Do, so I, I don't have current numbers. We got them last year. But so I think what you're talking about is between 15 and 20,000 to do those, those pieces and then 10,000 to go out. Yeah, those are rough.
Very rough.
Very rough numbers, but.
And I think, Chris, don't, don't we have some of it done up to?
It's done past there.
Done past there. Up to that driveway.
In this portion here and then around. So it might be a little less than 30,000, but that's not a huge chunk of what we're talking about.
Can we get some prices on that and bring it back to us?
Yes, and then time to get prices on the agenda.
I mean, I think that would.
But again, knowing where you're going to go, I mean, we filed for it out here. We turn around out in this driveway right here. So it depends.
But I mean, it's one because you penalize one because he's down at the end.
But we maintain out there.
We did do something, but they sell more lots. But I mean, you know, you bought some lots.
Yeah.
You did four houses, there's four more that could be done. You know?
So farther out we go, the thinner it gets.
I know, but do, is that a drawing card like Earl said? Is, you know, if we do that, is that something, does somebody else build a house out there? Those are pretty heavily taxed out there.
If in fact you have a house, I mean, the lots right now are going to about $10,000.
Oh, they sell 30 at the country club and it's.
Nobody's buying there either.
No, but I'm saying that.
I think one of the reasons why they're cheaper out there is because the road isn't good.
That could be.
I'm sure that's true.
Additional cost would be, is like, you see, the, the actual road is not, you know, where it used to be, you just take it out and then you're certain, so, you know, again, it's.
There's going to be more.
Yeah, you're going to have cost. If you just seal coat what's there, then long-term you're off. You know, and your easements and your assessment and the road's probably not probably installed right based on what they did in the actual plotting, you wouldn't have. You just build the road and then.
There we go.
Yeah. So it's just how far do you want to go? Do you want to straighten it out, you know?
Well, if we do anything, I can't believe that we went.
See how that road's off.
That's where it is now.
Yeah.
Blue.
This is where it's supposed to be. This is where it is.
Yeah.
So do you, so now do you correct it?
You have to.
You have to. So I mean, if you're going to pave it, you better correct it. I mean, that's my opinion, but so.
Well, then.
Yeah. You're going to have, they're going to have to use it. Have a cul-de-sac in that guy's basement.
So easements and everything else to. Well, is there any chance that we go to the property owner and say, uh, you want to help us out here?
I think you're probably not going to get a good answer. Well, I can't see going.
And I'm not in the corner.
I'm just saying, this is something we got put into that somebody else agreed to and we're getting.
Well, you know, you know what? I mean, most of us are kind of new here to all of this. Some of those agreements are, if there were enough houses, I'd be surveying. And this could be, like Chris was talking, this could be off, but we need to survey it and, you know, make sure it's right, so it can just cost that. Don't go that far, it's going to be more than just a chip and seal. Darren kind of offered a halfway spot and that is.
Until you know whether or not that road is in the right place.
Right.
But that has worked out, then I can't say going past that.
Up to the curb, Ken.
Well, the worst part of it is, I mean, the road supposedly is in right two people's houses. So who let them build the houses where they're at if the road was supposed to be there?
The map is, it's got different information. If you look here, there is a space that looks like that's where the driveway should be. And so I think it may be in that area. I mean, we still got to know, right?
Yeah, because that goes right through the middle of them three lots that's left.
There's no flat ground there.
If we're talking about being able to sell, this is what you want to develop, so, but that's for here.
Are the, are the lots on the right side owned by the same person as the lots on the left?
There are lots, but yes, the property.
Property is.
So, so they can.
There's nothing flat. The property owner could be a matter of transferring the road or where it's at.
Yeah.
If it's wrong, right?
If it's wrong.
If he agrees at him.
It would be to his best interest to do it. The question is though, is do you want to do all of this? Do you want to do it to the curb like Darren said?
Let's get a quote.
Yeah.
What will happen is, what will happen is is that we'll get a, a, a quote per square yard. The last time we had the quote was four and a half bucks.
I mean, I was thinking on the west portion of that road, if you, like where you can see where it's white, like where there's gravel and then there's no gravel according to that right mid that area.
Yep.
Or just kind of pass the last driveway, I guess is where I was thinking.
Right.
Or the last person's property line, wherever that on the left. And then, you know, because I think from that point on, I've been back there quite a few times. From that point on, like you said, that road is a, it's one lane and needs to be made a road.
Right now, it feels like a driveway.
But to that point.
Although it's a driveway, we, how it needs to be dedicated to it. Stevenson lives and Marty lives.
Yeah.
That's actually wide enough to kind of be a street.
Right.
Others just drive. We'll get it, the price will be per square yard. We'll bring it back.
We should probably get information on the engineering piece too.
Yeah.
Yeah, we probably need to see about that proper, that road right away.
And this does go downhill here. This, there is an erosion problem here. The gravel ends up going, pushing through this area here, so it settles in the, in the.
It's, that, that's the problem here, in for done, in for done.
Right.
So it's, it's not just the pay.
I know, you can find getting bad and everything.
Yeah, I mean, I just noticed. We'll bring back the series.
Approved claims is presented.
These three water main with that done and cleaned up and tested.
Might as well pour in the building hole, just to cover it up.
We doing that? Let's see if they, anything they disagree with.
Sabrina getting cold out there, Shaw? She needed a little heater to put under her vest?
Yeah.
Who do approve claims? Second.
John?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
We have any public comments?
Reports, Gary. Yeah, um, first of all, we discovered that the very last page of the code in a section all by itself, there is one paragraph that says that if anybody wants to get city utilities, they have to voluntarily annex into the city. I looked for hours and never did find it because it was on the very last page. It was out in, I mean, it was, it was like something way out here. It wasn't anything related to anything else in our code. It's like its own chapter. So conversations that we've had until, unless you all want to change, it's conversations about people wanting to get city utilities and, and be outside the city. They're going to have to voluntarily annex. Now, that assumes that they have the ability to annex. Because there are people that get utilities that are not annexable. They have to be annexable. Now, the question is, do you want to limit the idea of voluntarily annexing people that aren't annexable to the point of at some point in the future, if, if, if we do annex out to them and they automatically then come in? But the fact of the matter at this point in time right now, ordinance says that if somebody is on the city limit lines, if they want to get city utilities, they have to annex.
What makes them annexable or not?
If they are adjoining to the city limits. Can't have a space for property here, they're here. This is one of the biggest hindrances, and we've talked about this, and it's one of the biggest hindrances about why we have a difficulty trying to figure out how to develop Lake Fisher because there's a lot of intervening property between property we own and the city limits. Back in the nineties, we tried to annex in the islands that are in the city. And one of the property owners took it to court and a judge sided with them. So the state law says you can't have any islands. And yet, the judge sided with them. So we have islands that are surrounded by the city that are county, which is against state law. We didn't choose to appeal that, did we? Not at that time. I don't think, I don't remember. I don't know, state laws may change in some. But the fact of the matter is, is that right now we have city code that says you have to be in the city to receive utilities if you have the ability to annex. And you have to do it voluntarily. Because we can't force annex.
What if they don't volunteer?
Then they don't get utilities. 2007. May of '07.
Has anyone received an utility since?
No, I don't know.
I don't know. Because we got several, I'm assuming we, there is several people that are on city utilities that are not.
Probably grandpa.
Now, if they transfer title on that property, it has to be annexed, is that right?
I'm sorry?
If somebody that's on the edge of town currently has city utilities, if that transfers ownership, does it have to be annexed?
I doubt it. I think it runs with, I think it runs with the property, not with, not with the ownership. I mean, if, if you're talking about a fancy house, $800,000 in property taxes, that's what people do. Even though the upfront cost of all these utilities, they were to do them privately, like well inseptics, I mean, far more than what it would be to hook up to the city. And the maintenance of those things, quite frankly, would be far more than what it would be. And hooked up to the city. And a 25% surcharge. Exactly. So I, I, I mean, part of this is, is from my perspective, is a property, property owners are cutting their nose off despite the fate because they don't want to pay the city property taxes. Guess what? Property taxes are federally deductible. You get, what is it, 28% off of your tax bill by filing that's. What else can I say? Everybody don't need that. I dare say that some of the people that we're probably going to be looking at to try and do this probably would say, well, I just don't want to pay the money, it isn't that they can for it. Yeah. But that's the stigma of property taxation. So at this point in time, I'm just giving you that information because that's what we're going to say is here's the code. Another thing, in our discussions with parking rec board, one of the things that came up very specifically is, is that we're looking at trying to figure a better way of strolling the campgrounds. Um, one of the things that we thought about is having a posting, the kind of thing where you go to a state park and you have a post and you have a clip and you have a show that you got your tag on. That, that, we oughta do something like that at the mutual center, or, Lake Fisher. Um, we could do that, have some sort of a location to which we can either have somebody voluntarily pay the money and then we pick it up. They, they have to sign in, but then we collect the money. The best thing to do on that is, is have the police department go out there once a night, pick up the money and see if the people are appropriately posting their, their tags on, because we've had problems with vacancy up there. Haven't even talked to the chief about this, but the fact is, is that, um, I bet he's been out there, but. And, and, you know, this is the odd thing, it's Lake Fisher, it's not even in the state limits, you know? But it's our property. But I, I, I think, I think that if, if you would allow this discussion, that we try and see if we work something out with Sean to see if we can come up with a better way of, of patrolling that. But particularly a problem in the spring here, where we had some people that were squatting. And they would do the Quapalo, Lake Fisher, McGowan route and then go around again. I think if we were a little bit more vigilant about this stuff, um, I think that we could probably provide a little bit more safety for our community.
Should we have them out there?
Or not at all?
Have a hard, a hard time with that.
Eddie already did something that I think that we've probably bringing back to him. Um, that's all I got. Hey, Eddie?
Okay, just wanted to give you the project updates, and I sent you all emails, uh, today. Uh, the community development block grant for the sewer and water, we're on target there, the, uh, everybody knows, kinda last couple weeks, we've been doing a lot of locates and everybody's yards marked up, so we kinda got all our French renderers in town, did all the survey and everything there. So all the utilities have identified. So they got the preliminary drawings, uh, design done, they just need to adjust a little bit based off of what they found now, so we'll, we'll get those back. Uh, the sewer and water team will review those and, and make sure we're good, and we're still in contact for the October submission, uh, hopefully for the, yeah, community development block grant.
You done with the locate?
I'm sorry?
Are you done with the locate?
Uh, yes, we should be done on the E Street and everything else. I need some people to pull their flags and mother. Well, I'm careful with that, I wanna make sure, because we still got a lot of locate, you know, going on, so I, I, uh, you know, I thought about sending out a code red, but we don't have that, but I thought about sending something out, but the thing is, is we got so much locates in town, if you just send out a message, hey, go ahead and pull those, they might, so if something else is on there, so we just have to kinda, you know, locate's good for sixteen days, basically, so it's been there sixteen days, it hasn't been refreshed and it can be pulled. That's the real answer to that question, so. Going back to, uh, the project update, uh, talking about the box culvert, I know we talked about that, so, uh, they've done, they were here last, we did their core samples down there, they drilled holes and and pulled everything out of there, and we just got approval, got some files moved from French render over there, the design, the utilities and, and stuff, so we should be uh, within, uh, end of September, have our design plan ready to approve and, and hopefully let that bed here, uh, around October, if not sooner, I'd like to try to get that going. Talk about HR Green Sewer Plant, uh, last week, I sent out an email, uh, last week, of course, we, uh, had an unannounced DNR inspection and of course, it's kinda, it's their, kinda, kinda announced, but we kinda knew it was common, 'cause every two years is kinda their cycle, of course, one of the guys retires, a new guy come out. And, uh, we did, we are gonna receive a notice of violation because our facility plan's not been submitted by, and it was actually due in March, so we already kinda knew that we were in violation uh, because that's why we hired HRG to get us in compliance into by twenty twenty-one to meet all those requirements. So, uh, we did receive a notice of violation, we're gonna receive that officially in writing, and then, uh, HRG will get us on track, uh, by November to get us back with our facility plan and design, uh, thing.
That's a formal notice.
Right.
We've actually told the DNR about our plans to do this and said, yeah, okay. I mean, they gotta go and do the notices, probably federal requirements, most definitely.
And there probably will be a follow-up inspection with, uh, one of our significant, uh, contract contributors in the area, so, uh, working on that. Officer Seaton, I know from, uh, Police Chief Armstrong, we talked about, I talked about last time about a grant for, uh, signs and stuff, a state grant, that actually to do August fifteenth, we missed that cycle, we'd had to have a special council meeting to do a resolution to do that, so we're not gonna be able to get that, uh, traffic radar, we're talking about doing, uh, through the grant, so we need to get our, I guess, our stuff together and have it ready for submission for next grant. However, I did recommend after kinda talking to Chris, I think we should maybe fund a traffic radar, 'cause those are, you can get as little as, down what, outside, I wanna go, you know, probably a couple of grants, we can get one. So we actually do need to do some data capture to support the grants, talking about speed and traffic flow, so if we can get something like that, where we can capture data and, uh, and it helps submit for some other grants in the future for, for that every year, so I still kinda recommend, and we still buy traffic radar this year, we'll just use our own funds to get that and also to help with some of our areas here in town, so. But, uh, other than that, we just, basically, uh, rest of the public works department and stuff have been, uh, I think we've kinda made it through, uh, summer break and vacations, so we're more back to work now, so we've got pretty much more, run more of a full crew lately, so we're just working on streets and more infrastructure, a lot of gas services we're doing right now, and, and trying to take care of the area over by the school area, you know, the school can really go back on the twenty-nine, so we're trying to type up everything over there in that area, so. Other than that, some good questions?
You want my damn radar thing, so I can get it on me and end it.
Okay, right, okay, well, just talk to you. Chris?
Yeah, uh, just a couple things, one is, um, you know, I was a little nervous when we put together that list of housing, 'cause I was gonna get a lot of feedback, but the only feedback I've gotten is why, why isn't this house on that list and why isn't that house on the list? So I don't know what you guys are hearing, but so far it seems like it's gone right. Thank you, Eddie. Good. Uh, the other thing I wanna make you aware of, and this is, I'm not quite sure how to say this, so make them all look funny. Um, you know, we have the governor here, and I, I just wanna point out that those kinds of things, since, they really helped us achieve some of our goals, and this is how. Um, one of the goals of the A and G Independence was to try to be a model for other communities, right? And when we very first started and we were working some higher-profile grants, there were invitations sent to the city to say, hey, will you come tell us what you're doing? Since the governor was here and highlighted the project, we've, I've had three requests to come share what we're doing, and one was of Iowa, or IAMU Energy Conference, and others with the Iowa Ideas, uh, symposium in Cedar Rapids and, um, one other, can't think of it.
Downtown.
Pardon?
Downtown.
The downtown summit. And in addition to that, um, being asked to serve with the Governor's Commission on, uh, Empowering Our Lido. So just, I'm letting you know, that's your leadership coming through, right? You set a goal, took action, and made it happen, and I haven't been to face, but it's really the, the stuff that you guys are putting forward and committing to and funding, so it is. There's an impact, and it's ongoing, and that's, I just want you to be aware of it.
Drawing that kind of attention does a good thing.
Chief, um, we had the bike given away this week, we gave away eight bikes, it was a success, we can go back to school in vain or whatever, and, uh, for this week, at the end, we're gonna do a traffic enhancement through the state staff, so everybody wear their seatbelts. That's, uh, that's all I got. Taylor?
Any council updates?
Only thing I think is, I think a letter of recognition from the city council and the mayor, the Haley Swann, our Davis County Fair Queen, is the state fair queen. I think a letter from city council and the mayor congratulating her and recognizing that accomplishment would be a great thing.
Can we make it a proclamation from the next meeting if you like?
Sounds great, committee.
You're having my thunder, Earl.
I'm sorry. We need to talk.
We're having that reception for Wednesday night, you need it?
Yes, twenty-second.
Twenty-second. Six thirty to eight, fairground.
For the.
For the queen.
Wednesday night from six thirty to eight.
Six thirty to eight, Wednesday night.
At the fairgrounds.
Lemonade and cake, proper cooking, or something.
I didn't know that. Yeah. I mean, if you got enough council members showing up for that, you can get that proclamation done that night.
Nice. I can probably make that.
Yeah. I'll make it. I'm signing her. Post the agenda.
Any other council reports? I just got a couple letters here, the veterans, the American Legion Auxiliary Forty-Seven, a Fairfield toast on the wall with heels. It's the three hundred and seventy-five foot portable replica of the Wolf Memorial. It's gonna be in Fairfield September thirteenth through the sixteenth, open twenty-four hours a day until two PM on Sunday, if anybody's interested. Then I got another letter from the Iowa municipal professionals thanking us for supporting them this year and, uh, give Sandy a thanks for attending the A C A, participating in the A C A. Other than that, uh, that'll be the end of the regular meeting and we're going to adjourn the regular meeting and go into closing. You want to go into close session?
Jeff? Just for the record, there's a close session item that was added to, which is, um, I didn't envision, actually we have two of those.
Darren?
Yeah.
John?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jack? I'm ready to go.
It's a big team effort.